Calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Councilmember DePena will not be here this evening. Councilmember Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Strumel Burke.
Present.
Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, July 1st, 2021 additions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are in file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to our first meeting in a month. If you're following along on the agenda, we now have a matter or matters for executive session. Those matters are the new employee handbook. Mr. Martino put that item on, as well as personnel labor negotiations that the manager put on. So I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
One second, one second. I gotta add something. I just want to put it on the record. We're adding a litigation matter that came up today.
So a third matter for discussion, which is going to be a litigation matter.
Correct.
Motion, go into private.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to go into private session. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Unfortunately, for those of you that are here right now, we are going to have to clear the room.
Those of you that just came in.
Just want to remind you that no action will be taken while we're in private session.
You have to leave.
We have three items to discuss.
You can come back in a little bit.
A few minutes.
If everybody just let me explain, I could have... So Jackie, you're going to mute the mic? Let's get a motion to exit executive session.
Motion to come out in private.
We have a motion made in second to exit executive session. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Sorry about that, everybody. Just want to remind you that you are joining an active meeting. While we were in executive session, absolutely no action was taken. I'd like to welcome you all to our combined conference/regular meeting. During these meetings, which is the first meeting of the month, you'll hear members of the council and our professionals and our administration discuss various topics. Unfortunately, this is a conversation among us and our professionals and the administration. If you do hear something that you'd like to comment on, you absolutely have that choice to do so during the public portion of this meeting. But for now, as we take on some of these discussions, you're basically here as an audience to watch us have these conversations. If you hear something that you're interested in, you most certainly have the right to speak on that later on during the meeting. But at this time, it's really just an internal conversation that you're all here to listen to and watch. So without further ado, the first topic of discussion is, an item that I put on, I went back to the council meeting of the first meeting of October. And during that meeting, we discussed GovPilot and we discussed some of the integrations there. And at that meeting, the manager said, as well as Representative GovPilot, that we'd be up and running by November 1st. So I'm just looking for an update on that.
Okay, members of the council. I did distribute a email at the end of the day, hoping that there might be a GovPilot representative here tonight. That didn't work out, so I sent out the letter to hopefully offset some questions or some concerns. Since then, since the last email, I have one other email that I would like to read into the record or read for the council and share with you. This last email came in at 4:49. And again, it may address some of the questions and concerns, and certainly we'll have opportunity to discuss it. But it says, "Hi, Anthony. I am following up to let you know that we do not have anyone available to attend tonight's council meeting in person due to the late notice. I apologize for the late notice in getting back to you. We would be happy to attend via Zoom if possible. Again, I understand the frustration that the delayed deployment of the construction module has caused. This delay was due to enhancements that we are making to the modules functionally, as well as changes that were needed as a result of new New Jersey legislation for online permitting. We are now able to deliver a superior module. However, I apologize for the lack of transparency throughout the process and any inconvenience or mistrust that the delay may have caused. At this time, GovPilot has deployed eight out of the 11, and that Belleville signed for, which is about 73%, is what we expected since our contract begun. To account for our shortcomings, GovPilot would like to waive the 100% of the fee for 2022." And just as a reminder, that 2022 fee is $48,000. And they are going to waive that based on their shortcomings and did not live up to some of the deadlines. "We value the relationship with Belleville and would like the chance to get our remaining modules deployed and work on strengthening our support with the township. We expect to have the construction module ready for your review by the week of November 22nd, and we'd be touching base frequently over the next two weeks to keep you up to date. Onboarding specialist Millie will be reaching out to schedule a review of the module as soon as it's ready. Thank you for your patience while we continue to get Belleville's remaining modules deployed. Please let me know if you have any questions, concerns. Our CEO, Mike Michael, and Senior Vice President Chief Product Officer James are both copied on this email and are looking forward to correcting the situation and improving GovPilot's relationship moving forward." The only other thing that I would like to add to the mayor and council is that since the inception of this program, and again, about 73% is up running, moving in the right direction, we have not paid any money at all. So we have, so in lieu of the fact that they are waiving the 2022 fee, which is $48,000, which I thought, you know, and that all came about, I had about six phone conversations today. So we kind of really, hate to use the word beat them up, but we kind of really drove the point home that their shortcomings is really at a point.
I'm pleased that I've been able to keep this in the forefront because I fear that if I hadn't been bringing this up every single meeting, we'd still be dealing with no modules and no integration. So I'm grateful for their offer.
That's ridiculous to say that, Mike.
Okay.
Because he said he...
So I'm grateful for these modules.
He just came up with 75% of them are done.
Okay, so Councilman Rovell.
And oh, by the way, we never paid him a dime. You never signed the contract. Did you sign the contract, Mike?
No.
No, you never signed the contract.
When you want to put an item on...
You signed within 10 seconds of the meeting being over.
Councilman, when you want to put an item on, you've never put an item on for discussion. When you want to do so, you can speak a lot more. But right now, I'm having a conversation with the manager.
Good.
So with regard, Anthony, they mentioned a late notice. This had been on the agenda since Friday. Five days is not enough notice for the next time, maybe?
The late notice in requesting someone to come to the meeting.
They say eight of the 11 modules are done, 73%. As of Sunday, unfortunately, I can't share my screen right now. As of Sunday, just so everybody's aware, we're still looking at the same exact three models, three modules. We have zero use in all the, we have zero uses in ticket IT management, zero use in dog license, zero use in asset management, zero use in CCO, zero use in use of municipal facilities, zero use in CCO, zero use in vehicles and equipment, zero use in pet licenses, I guess we're going to wait for January for that, zero use in business registration, and zero in rental CCO.
But zero use is not...
The three that we are using are actually down 33%, down 55%, and down 33%.
But the zero use doesn't mean it's not complete. For instance, asset manager, we have every single fire hydrant identified in the town in the system. So when a fire hydrant goes down and it needs repaired, we go over to asset manager. If the vehicle inventory, I don't know if Bobby is not here today, but again, just because there was zero use in the, but the vehicle inventory is up and running.
So who's the point person in Belleville Town Hall for this?
It's broken up by department, but ultimately, I take full responsibility.
I mean, the modules are easy. We've dealt with that. As you were in the car with me this week, and I have the video to show it, there's still issues with the app. Now, I understand what you're going to say. In the end of the experiment that you and I did, the end result actually came through. However, Councilman Cazarelli has now seen it. You have seen it. When you typed in the address, the address changed. You then hit submit, and the original address came through, which was correct. But you could imagine how the end user, typing in an address and seeing it change before your very eyes, probably won't hit the submit button. The fact that you hit the submit button and the original address that you typed in came through is good, but we still have to fix the app. You can't use the app because the address changes.
Well, the app is working. And again, we can use it because in the event, again, the reason why it's working is because we have an email.
Do you consider if I sit in front of the chief's house on Bernice Road, and I type his address in, and right before my eyes, the address goes to Celia Terrace, that's not working because the end user might say...
We have a record. I mean, again, it's more than what we had before. So we have a record, we have a phone number, we have an email. And again, residents that are using it are extremely happy with it. And again, every email that we have wrote...
So report of concern is down 55%.
Okay.
We only had 31 last week.
Okay.
So I don't know necessarily if a township of 38,000 residents are actually pleased in using the system. I can't use it. You and I were in the car.
And it worked in front of you.
But you're not listening to anything I'm saying.
Not only because you're going to say what you want to say, so say it.
But I had a video where I'm shooting your face in the car, and I'm shooting my camera on your phone.
Minutes after you shut your phone, it worked perfectly.
And we see the address change.
But you just said it did work.
We see the address change. Do we not see the address change?
Listen.
Do you refute that the address changed right in front of us?
Until we hit the submit button, and then it worked correctly.
Hey, man, it's free.
The average person...
What are you worried about?
No, actually, we paid, we're paying for it this year.
No, we didn't.
Well, we haven't paid anything.
We haven't paid a dime, Mike. We haven't even signed a contract.
Again, I mean, the good news is that...
Councilman Rovell seems to know a lot about this contract. I don't know how, but maybe...
I know we approved...
Maybe somebody here...
Have you signed this, and it's never been signed?
Maybe somebody here...
We spent $100,000 on a public relations firm that seems to be just a political ploy for you.
Okay.
You know what? I don't see any ROI on that.
No, of course not.
No, I don't.
I know you're not used to positive news, Councilman. You've been here a long time without it.
I am used to positive news.
But guess what? There's a lot of positive news happening.
Pay credit for everything we did.
So there's reasons, Anthony, and I've seen emails as to why that contract. I don't have the authority to sign that contract yet. Perhaps you could attend to some of those emails, and we can get the contract signed.
Absolutely.
Maybe, Councilman Rovell, you could fill him in.
Could we? No, I don't know, man. All I...
Clearly, you don't know, which is why you shouldn't be speaking about it.
Mike, you asked me. Let me comment on this. I saw a response from Mr. Martino that there's some things that need to be resolved. And you and Mr. Martino, since you're involved in the execution of it, should really sit down and get it done.
Oh, I should sit down and get it done? I have to sign it.
But we, question for the manager.
Yes, sir.
Next time you have a conversation with someone from GovPilot, could we add something on the app that has, or on the website that has, "Report a problem with reporting a concern?" Basically, reporting a concern. About a concern. So we know if someone does have an issue, maybe it does get recorded or logged somehow so that their complaint still gets...
Since we do have some... You saw the video today.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Did you not see the address change?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I'm saying. Maybe...
That's all I'm trying to say.
There could be a little...
You type an address in, it changes before your eyes.
Maybe there could be like a separate form, like a plain form.
This is on the mobile app.
Right, it's on the mobile.
It's a mobile app as far as location and other stuff.
To the best of my knowledge, GovPilot has recognized any concern that was brought forward, continue to work on it. And again, I think this latest offer of reducing...
I think it's a great offer.
And if I may...
You know what I mean?
Very well.
Report of bug or issues with that have a separate little thing that...
Okay.
So their comment still comes through somehow?
And if I may?
Excellent point.
And if I may? If it didn't come to these conversations, good, bad, or indifferent, and with the accountability being placed on it, we, the town, would have spent $45,000 for no reason. So there's good that came out of this.
You're telling me he's not holding them accountable? I know he is.
I'm, okay, so...
I know he's talking to them all the time.
I'm saying...
Only because I keep bringing it up.
What you're saying is he's not...
Only because I keep bringing it up.
You didn't hear what, I guess no one's listening, when I said, "If nothing was done or said about this..."
Yes. "In public."
"If nothing was done or said, public or not public, do you really think..."
Nope.
"$35,000 would have been saved?"
Nope.
Honestly.
I think if it wasn't for Anthony...
I'm not saying Anthony. I am not, but I'm not saying Anthony. I'm saying in general.
So you know, Tom, yeah, I get information back. So does Vinnie on, hey, where are we? What's going on? Stuff like that, because we stayed engaged in it. Do I think it's necessary to put it into a public forum? No. But you know what? You guys want to bring it into a public forum and use it to grandstand? That's your prerogative.
I don't, I don't think it's grandstanding.
I think we're trying to get the taxpayers' best bang for our buck.
Alls I'm saying is $45,000 was saved, however it came.
$100,000 for a public relations firm. That's a great bang for your buck.
Again, I know you're not used to bragging about good accomplishments, but I think we've done a lot the last three and a half years.
I don't brag about myself, Mike. That's the difference. I don't sit here and promote myself or weaponize public relations against my employees. I've never done that. You're right.
It's odd because you voted for it in the year before your election, didn't you? I know I'm right.
You're right.
Next.
Because nobody else could be right.
We have a next item on the agenda is e-scooters. So chief, I'm seeing the encroachment of e-scooters into Belleville. I know that NORC has a contract. It's not, there's a couple of different big companies out there. It's not LimeBike, which is one of the big ones. But I know NORC has a contract with them, and we're seeing them driving into Belleville. We're seeing them left on corners and intersections, which is actually the purpose. You're supposed to leave them so somebody else can pick them up. But we do have the ability to restrict if we want to. We have the ability to let the company know geographic boundary on where they're permitted, where they're not permitted. So I don't know if you would have any recommendations, not necessarily today or right now, but if you and your traffic team might want to advise us on something that we could do if we want to look into just somehow regulating or restricting.
Sure. They're all through the park. Did you see Belleville Park? They're everywhere.
I work right there.
I've probably seen 10, at least 10 today driving through the park. But just left, kind of like left.
That's the whole point. You're supposed to be left there. That's the point. You're supposed to leave them, but, you know, I don't know if people realize that what motor vehicle laws they have to follow. I don't realize if they know all that.
Where the boundaries are. I don't know. When they come into Belleville, right? Because part of that park is in Belleville. What happens? You know, does NORC still come and get them? Or, right, who owns them?
It's a third-party company.
A company that e-scooter, whether it be Lime or whatever. It's like the city bikes.
Do we have, yeah, but do we have certificate of insurance from them holding us harmless?
That's literally why it's on the agenda today.
Are they using them in Belleville though?
They're in Belleville. They're using them in Belleville.
They're supposed to shut off when they hit the border.
They don't. They don't.
They're all in the park.
Like I said, county border is tricky because it's technically Belleville, but...
Right, we might have to communicate with them, give them the geographic boundaries. And, but if you could have your traffic team or task your traffic people with that, just something I wanted to get out there that we should be looking at. The last item that I have is an issue with voting. I fielded a lot of complaints from Tuesday's election. Everybody from, and I have them all here, everybody from saying that they voted and they checked their online history, and their online history showed them not voting, to people that were given the incorrect information. When they got to the polling location, I had engaged a clerk a couple of times with people telling me that they were refused the opportunity to vote because they were told they had already received a vote by mail ballot. They're not being educated correctly, that they can fill out a provisional ballot. And then I probably have about 10 or 15 different comments that I've talked to people on social media that also had the exact same concerns. People are not happy with the new system. I do know that we are not the only county with the new system, but I think, I believe actually, that Hudson County still has the traditional machines with the curtain. I know that each county can make their own decisions. Our county obviously chose this. But everybody was complaining from everything, from not being able to have privacy to handing in the ballot to somebody else to scan. There was a lot of things that they were just not happy with, and our residents are really, really upset about it. And unfortunately, they blamed us, of course, because they just said, well, you know, typical Belleville. You screwed up the voting process. And one, I put a message out there on social media on election day that this is not our decision. The voting machines are definitely the county's decision. Training the poll workers is the county's decision. But I had a slew of people online that were just really, really unhappy with the entire process. And I don't know, Kelly, I know we were promised a tutorial or an open house, but that was canceled at one point. So maybe we can re-engage the county again. Not necessar, I know that open house was more for us as a governing body, but maybe we can do an open house for our seniors, the senior building. Just to read, I'm going to paraphrase about 10 different comments here. Horrible experience today. Workers not trained in how to use the pads. An officer in our fire department, the rec house on 407 Drylonne Street, tried to exercise my right to vote. The new secure voting machines were locked, and no one had a key. That went an hour and a half, that people were refused the opportunity to vote at the rec house. And that's coming from a local fireman. Another person, today I went to vote in Belleville Rec House. It was a real bleep show. The first thing I noticed, there was no voting machine. That's another location. Another person, voted at the high school. Total joke, no privacy. My wife, daughter, and I were all told different ways to scan the ballot. Another person. The people were very nice, but the machines were terrible. Another person, I hate this new way to vote. I had no privacy. I'm not a fan of this at all. Another person, very unorganized. Voting while others can look over your shoulder is an issue with me. They told me to hand them the ballot face down. Somebody else told me to hand them the ballot face up. The poll worker looked at my ballot before he scanned it. These are, this is just, I don't know who thought this was a great idea, but clearly, if we can, I don't know if they're going to reevaluate after this election, but if we can maybe communicate to the Board of Elections, or the clerk, or something, because my own mother actually went to the polling location and was told she's not a voter there. Then they found her. I don't know what that even means, to find her, but then they found her. So I just wanted to put that on the record. I did promise these people that I'd be bringing it up today. And I know our hands are tied, as usual, it's frustrating, but I think they have to make some changes and do something because it's not right.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I happen to like the old-fashioned way, but everything is changing so fast in this world. It's ridiculous. But with the scanning, did it, I know Mrs. Grant Chantoni, you worked at Feutsmann, and that's where I vote. With the scanning, did it take a lot longer? Did we, I went early, like 8 o'clock. Were there a lot more lines, if I may, through the chair? Because she was a worker.
It went faster, and we were trained to tell the voter to put their own ballot in the machine. We did not touch it.
And that's what happened. I was here for a while. That's what happened here. There was a nice young girl, and she would tell people, please keep it in the envelope, take it out yourself, face down, push it in. But so many people, especially at the high schools, multiple polling locations, multiple poll workers, they, I now learned after Tuesday, or during Tuesday, that no matter which way you enter it, face up or face down, it scans. But then when families got home, and they were talking, and they said, well, I put mine face down, and somebody said, I put my face up. Oh, well, now my vote didn't count because one of us did it wrong. They don't realize that you could have done it either way. So there's a lot of miscommunication.
Excuse me, I work the poll.
Okay.
Not in Belleville, but I, it's for the county. They supply you with a folder.
Sure.
To slide it through.
Yeah, no, then we had that here.
So, I mean, if the poll workers were taking it themselves, that was on them. But it does say it passed either way.
Right. No, I have learned that. I learned that that day. But it did cause confusion from people that got home and talked and said that I did it one way, you did it another. And they don't realize it could have been done either way. So they're immediately thinking their vote didn't count. Do you see the confirmation? I get it. I get it. And the people that worked that knew that, and the people that were doing it the first time, there was a senior who put checkboxes on the circles, and then it didn't take. And then he got frustrated and just walked out.
Yep.
So just if we could communicate somehow Belleville's level of frustration, not necessarily mine, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it was terrible too, the way it was done. It was horrible at my polls.
It was.
Horrible.
It was.
Horrible.
They have to get into that and straighten them out because they have people coming up that were born 1800s.
Yeah, I have the database. I have a copy of the database, and there are a lot of people born in the 1800s. And even the angle that, even the angle you had to be at to sign it, it didn't. Anyway, we all know the frustrations. So I'm going to move on. Tommy, I think you had a last-minute change. If not, we're going to go to Councilor Ravel. He's got two things.
Yes, I just, I know, I forgot who brought up last meeting. Anthony, do you have an update on the pickleball request to be placed in?
Friendly House.
Friendly House.
I have no update at this point.
Okay, because I did some homework myself through people in Belleville and outside who play outside of Belleville. Pickleball is a sport that actually is played outside predominantly. And if you play inside, it's going to require taping, nets, and people to do that work, which you're going to have, we're going to have to pay on top of it to line and take apart and redo and so forth and so on. But predominantly, it is played outside. That said, we're going for dollars, if I'm not mistaken, right? For budgetary reasons, to put in the budget for two. And then I brought up about the third one over in the same facility. And through you, I did ask, I did ask if I could talk to Meglia because they're going ahead with the whole dog park thing and redoing it per prior meetings on the entrance. They said that would be a great idea because they're having a difficult time bringing the entrance up with that stand there. And it can be, if that was really opened and you wanted to add the pickleball, the, excuse me, third pickleball court, that would be the way to go. You do it once, you fund it once, and it's there. So I just wanted to share with the council that through people in Belleville, outside of Belleville, who play this game regularly in the summer, it is an outdoor sport, yes, in the wintertime. If it's available to play inside, it's nice to have. But it's predominantly an outside sport. And then if we are looking for dollars and we have to get them in there, and we can come up, it doesn't have to be today, but we have to come up with a vote, an ordinance, or whatever we have to do to make that area, if that's what was proposed by Meglia and team, I think we should put that on an agenda, vote on it, and move forward. Because it's something that the town wants. A lot of people in the town want.
So we took down the other stands incorrectly? I'm missing the point here. So you want to take down the other set of stands, or should we have moved those, taken down the other set of stands first?
No, personally, if you look at that whole complex and we're going to do pickleball, that, those stands also go away, and you put three pickleball fields with the entrance in.
What are we going to do with those stands? Destroy another $150,000?
Well, that's, again, I don't, I'm not here debating what to do with the stands.
It was a great, it was a great facility, and we've kind of destroyed it.
I'm not saying it wasn't.
We had stands that nobody sat in.
I never went to a baseball game.
Right, so I'm not saying, I'm not saying what to destroy or not to destroy. Alls I'm saying is.
Move stuff, man. Save it, preserve it.
And I'm not saying not to do that. I'm not saying not to do that. But alls I'm saying is, times have changed.
People don't play baseball?
They do play baseball, but.
They don't see the outfield.
Okay, I'm not going to, but when you watch your kids, you are on the side or in the back. I know it. You and I did it.
The stand that take the stands.
You and I did it. And I'm not debating that. Alls I'm saying is.
You know, don't waste them. Don't destroy them like we did.
And I'm not.
We blew $150,000 worth of stands down the toilet.
And I'm not saying to.
There's no reason to beat the manager over that. That was a decision that.
I'm not saying destroy them.
We were getting pickleball courts.
Yeah, I'm just saying pickleball courts, where we go.
If we're going to do that, and we're going to go pickleball courts, why don't we also talk to the rest of the people about what they would prefer? Their baseball field or pickleball courts? I think that's what we should do. We should survey them.
Not a problem. I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
Good. If we do.
So the survey is going to be, would you rather sit in stands that no one sat in for a decade or get a pickleball court? Is that the survey?
You want to put it that way? That's great. What I'm saying is.
Is that the survey? I'm asking the question.
You want a baseball field, a varsity baseball field.
Nothing to do with the field.
That's the question.
It's got nothing to do with the field.
Has nothing to do with the baseball field.
It's no longer good for tournaments. It's no longer good for anything.
The one tournament that we played, the one tournament that we played, it was in Belleville, and Christie, and Chris Christie sat behind.
Chris Christie came, there's a whole bunch of other tournaments behind.
But he sat in the back.
State tournaments. You know what? I got, I got a chance. I'm grateful. I got a chance to see that. And I also got a chance to watch our kids play in Four Diamonds in Newark when we didn't have those stands. And we didn't have that field. So to me, going backwards is not the way the town should go.
I don't think you're going backwards. I think.
I don't think offering pickleball to our active seniors is going backwards at all.
You know what? We're going to disagree on that. If we do.
I stand with pickleball.
If we do decide to do the pickleball courts, I do want to request, though, that the stands we put at the nature park.
And that's fine. I'm not saying.
Let's put it in the pistol ranch.
That's what I'm talking about. If that's the consensus.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying throw them away. I'm saying reuse them. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. Anyway.
You good, Councilman?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item is Councilor Ravel.
So when I had an opportunity to walk with the mayor and Tommy and a couple other people, the river itself, Third River, as well as look at the cemetery, and one of the things I did do is I got a copy of a study from 2011, which is the Passaic Valley Study. And one of the issues I think we need to look at, and we need to set a baseline for this current time, is to actually do a study now, get a flood mitigation study for Fairway or for that whole river for ourselves, so we can set a baseline and understand where we are today. And that's what I'm kind of proposing here, is we need to sit down and come up with a way to do that.
What did that study say in 2011?
It really, it didn't, it didn't really, you know, it just kind of showed, it showed everything. It really didn't, you know, go into the depths and stuff like that. I mean, I could, if I, I'll get a copy of it.
Did it have recommendations? Did it have?
No, well, there's recommendations on, you know, they were going to take the dam down and some other stuff up. Because basically, that all comes and is fed by the Great Notch Reservoir. Now, I don't know, per fact, was that dam ever taken down? Is the dam there? Do they release, do they release water from there still or no?
I don't think so, yeah, but.
I mean, that's, that's the other thing. That's, that's why, that's why I'm saying. But we also need to set some sort of baseline in that area, and as well as the whole Third River for us. Because even on the other side, we get flooding, so. And I think that's the way we need to proceed in order to, before we start indicting people or talking about other things, we need to get some, some real facts.
And based on that, and based on that walk, Councilman, I really think that.
Those facts are a decade old, by the way.
Yeah, but I really think on a yearly basis, because they did say Passaic Valley, that we should be asking them to come back and look and clean. That we, that was, you know, for whatever reason, it hasn't been done in years. So we should go back and we should constantly ask them every year to come back, look, clean what you can clean, dredge what you can dredge, and help, you know, not let, not let's talk about it and set it aside, let's continue the process.
And my question is, because really, they said they can't dredge. And that's my question. Why can, why can they dredge Passaic River, but they can't dredge us?
The DEP has to.
I mean, the last piece, and I know that we've been looking at this for a couple of years, is actually putting that marine pump for the sewer injector pump and taking a look at that end. So somewhere along the line, we need a proposal to understand what the cost would be on that. And also, part of that would be raising the controller, because I think that's the second piece of this. The controller is at a very low level, too. So that actually would flood out unless we raise it up. And I think those are the two pieces.
Okay.
At least we can, we can start to do something over there.
Okay. Good answer.
I'm fine.
Okay, we're going to move along then. So next item on our agenda is the report of the manager.
Yeah, just in the last two weeks, we've been relatively busy with water breaks and two sewer breaks. Water breaks, fortunately, we've been able to repair in-house. The unfortunate part is when a sewer line breaks, it's normally 12 feet or deeper. We don't have that type of equipment. We can't do that in-house. The two sewer breaks in the last two weeks probably going to run us somewhere in the neighborhood of $90,000. So, you know, it's tough to prepare for that as far as budget, because the, the infrastructure is the infrastructure. And this is the time of the year where you get to change the weather, where you see more water breaks. We just had another water break again that we have to repair tomorrow on Belleville Avenue. So that's been keeping us basically very busy for the last two weeks and trying to stay on top of it, trying to do it in a cost, cost-efficient way. I know we had a lot of activity, a lot of events. We've had quite a few meetings as it pertains to the Fairway flood. So I'll leave that up to the council and the mayor to report on. And I know there's a list of events, but the one thing that the mayor might, I'm sure he got the memo, but December 17th, right now, looks like the date for our holiday event, which are Christmas tree lighting. That's all I have for this.
And if I may, through the chair. Yeah, just, I want to thank you for doing a good job with the Halloween. I think it was, it was very nice. It was crowded. The kids loved it. It was a nice job, so thank you.
Good job.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor. So as Anthony mentioned, I'd like to just summarize one or two quick things that happened already. About a week or so ago, Councilor Cazarelli and I attended the Wesley United Methodist Church, the 230th year anniversary. That church was here before Belleville was Belleville. George Washington was being sworn into office when that church was here. So that's a, it was an honor for us both to be there that day. As the manager and Councilor Graziano mentioned, we had a fantastic Halloween event, a huge crowd. I might add, huge crowd even in spite of a cancellation of the original event and postponement till the next day. We also had a very good Halloween decorating contest. We're going to be doing the same thing, obviously, this year for Christmas. I think Belleville hit it out of the park this past weekend with our, we had an unbelievable Veterans Day weekend. Started out with a street dedication for Michael Donnelly. Then it went to a 12:00 parade. Then it went to a 3:00, 5K, which we raised just over $4,400 for our four local veterans organizations, which should account to about $1,000 to $1,100 for each of those organizations. I do want to thank those vets. The vets really stepped up. I met with them regularly. We had in-house personnel, Ms. Gina Lombardi, Ms. Jackie Guaman, that really, really ran the entire day. Police did a fantastic job. We don't often understand the stress that we put on our police department when we have events throughout the entire day of road closures. Road closures are easy. That's cones, and that's cops, and that's that. But when you're doing mobile closures and moving closures with the 5K, and people that finish in 15 minutes or 16 minutes, and people that finish in an hour, that's a lot of moving parts there. And our police department hit it out of the park. I know the chief was on it because I was on it. We received a compliment this week from a resident, not a Belleville, but took the time to actually sit back and tell the chief and myself what a great job our police department had done for her. And also, we had a neighboring mayor from East Newark, Ms. Mayor Dina. She ran the 5K with me, and she commented afterwards about how amazing our local police department was. They were encouraging, they were fist pumping, they were clapping for people as they were running by. Really, really, as somebody who receives all the complaints all the time, really, really something great to hear. And then we ended the weekend with Michael Morgan Street dedication on Carpenter. Again, probably 200 people out in the street. It was a fantastic weekend weather-wise, but I really think Belleville did a great job. News, today we started Tai Chi, Tai Chi in the senior center for our seniors. That's not necessarily, just because it happens in the senior center, it's not necessarily for just our senior clubs, it's for any senior. It's Tai Chi, it's yoga, and I always promised our seniors that we'd work on some programming there. And I think we're starting to get some programming back now that we're coming out of COVID. That's going to be every single Tuesday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Since the last council meeting, a few people touched on it already, myself, Councilor Graziano, some other people walked the Third River with Passaic Valley. We have secured their commitment to clean out the river. It's a start. It's, I don't think it's going to mitigate much, but it's a start from them to do that. We now have a dialogue. We're waiting on them to come back to us with some dates. Since then, we've also been onsite and met with the cemetery. Again, different day, different time, different set of people. We were onsite with them, communicating. I have received, based on an email, I sent our state delegation, which is our senator and two assembly people, asking them for help in a meeting with the DEP. They have responded. Our assemblyman and our sen, our assemblywoman and our senate office have both responded to me, saying that they are in talks right now to get the DEP down here for us. We just want to get our hands around what's going on and cobble together as many agencies as we most possibly can. Lastly, for news, I have seen, a couple of us have seen and been part of meetings with regard to the park complex down at Number Nine School. I say park complex down at Number Nine because it's ours. It's a municipal park down there, and we've got some great things coming there. Two new basketball courts, a brand-new turf field. There is already a footsole court there. We're looking at a total upgrade of the playground equipment. We're looking at potentially another dog park down in that area. So it's going to be a really great complex, and we're really, really looking forward to that. With regard to upcoming events, as I mentioned, every single Tuesday, we have Tai Chi yoga at the seniors. I did, after the hurricane, have what was called a happy hour with the mayor for some of our DPW people. I know at a previous, Councilwoman Burke, I know at a previous meeting, you mentioned police and fire, a pizza thing. Not sure if we have a, you have a date for that?
No, not yet.
Okay. Somebody had just asked me that this weekend. So this Thursday is Veterans Day. Reminder, the town hall will be closed. We're also, as the manager mentioned, planning our winter festival and our Christmas tree lighting. Manager mention is going to be Friday, December 17th. And lastly, looking forward, we're going to be having our Three Kings Day celebration, January 6th. That celebration looks like it's going to be just like the previous celebration, which is going to be a drive-through. That was an incredibly successful event, and we're already looking at that.
We did use the tenant.
Oh, wow, really? Even though it's considered, okay. So we had that at the senior center, caused a little bit of congestion on Franklin Avenue. We now have, wow, okay, I'm getting nods. We now have the okay to do that in the horseshoe driveway at the high school, which I think is a better venue. We didn't know if they were going to consider Three Kings a religious event or not. But we have our Christmas tree lighting there, so why not? Okay, so that's great. That's it for my mayor's report. It is the first meeting in a month. Does any councilperson have anything to say with regard to any committees they may or may not be working with? Hearing none? Seeing none? We're going to move on to the approval of minutes.
Regular meeting of March 23rd, 2021.
Make a motion?
We have a motion made in second to move those minutes. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli. Graziano?
Yes.
Notari. Ravel?
Yes.
Strumelob Burke?
Yes.
Yes. Communications.
A letter received from Mayor Melham, appointing Vanny A. Nettleford as Class IV member, alternate number one to the planning board, to fill an unexpired term, said term to expire July 1st, 2022. B, proposal received from Dean Donatelli Esquire to provide legal services as redevelopment council to the township of Belleville.
Ordinances?
Ordinance number one, for introduction, ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Section 13.1 of the codified ordinances entitled Administration, Police Department Fees.
Need a motion?
Motion introduce.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to introduce. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari. Ravel?
Yes.
Strumelob Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance number two.
An ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 3490, creating permanent decisions and adopting classification and compensation plans.
Need a motion introduce?
Motion introduce.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari. Ravel?
Yes.
Strumelob Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance number three.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Section 2.7, 2-7.1 of the codified ordinances entitled Administration, Department of Health and Human Services.
Need a motion introduce?
Motion introduce.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli. Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumelob Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, we're now in the portion of the meeting for public comments. Anybody choosing to speak? It's going to have five minutes to speak. Just, we ask you to come forward, speak into the microphone, state your name and address to the record. I do need a motion to open public comments.
Motion open public?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public comments. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari. Ravel?
Yes.
Strumelob Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Mr. Hinton, you're right here.
Gary Hinton, 307 Fairway Avenue. It's nice that you've come up with Passaic Valley to check the river out and look and see what's happening. But we've been down this road many times, many times. Passaic Valley comes in, they'll only clean up anything that's blocking the water from flowing, period. They're not going to clean up anything up on the banks at all, all right? So keep on going into all this here story about they can't do this because of the DEP, they can't do that because of the DEP. I just want one question to the whole board. Are we allowed to dump debris, concrete, blocktop on our riverbanks? Are we allowed to, or is that illegal?
I'm no expert, but I would think that would not be permitted.
Okay. That is what I keep asking, and everybody just keeps dancing around the issue of what they're dumping.
When you say, when you say they, sir.
Excuse me?
When you say they dump, who's the they?
The graveyard.
Okay.
The graveyard. They had all contractors, district contractors coming and dropping it. The stuff's hanging out of the side. They covered it up the last time, and all we keep getting is fluffed around here, all[1373.48] getting is fluffed around here, all right? It's a bunch of bullshit what's going on with this here.
Need you to be careful of your language, sir.
All right. They shouldn't be allowed to dump that stuff. They should have to be required to remove the stuff that they dumped there. It's illegal dumping and nobody's addressing that issue, period. You want to go to the deep, you want to go to the Passaic Valley, and all you're doing is giving us the same crap that we heard time and time again.
So.
When are you going to actually do something? If I went in there with a bunch of concrete and started dumping on the property, you'd be fining me, you'd want to fine me, all right? Something needs to be addressed, done, that has to be addressed. The illegal dumping, period. The filling in the floodplain is another issue, all right? Do a study of the area, get a topography map of that area as it stands today, compare it with one from back then, and you're going to see as plain as day that they covered, they filled in that land, which made it worse for all the residents down there with the Bridge Book condominiums and the Fairway Park, even Celia gets flooding because of that. They bottlenecked the area and something needs to be done about it. Not bringing in all these here studies, we must have had at least 10 studies since I've been living there, all right? They say they're going to do this, they start with the Gabion Wall and then everything else gets shuffled around here, shuffled around there. Nobody's addressing the problem, all right? Why does everybody look the other way when it comes to the graveyard? That's what I'd like to know.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else, ma'am?
Carol Bagnell, 287 Fairway Avenue. I have a couple of questions, actually. With the Passaic Valley said that you have to call them to clean, and I don't know why the onus has to be put on a changing administration that changes every time we have an election day. Shouldn't that just be a regular thing that they do every six months, come and clean? Shouldn't they put it on their agenda?
No, they're.
They're not required to maintain the waterways that they're responsible for?
They are absolutely statutorily obligated, and I learned this because I was on the ground with them in the river, statutorily obligated to maintain the Passaic River. They do consider arteries, they have a different word, tributaries. They will come out and clean that, but their main constitutional goal is the Passaic River. We had them there and they said yes, they're going to come and clean.
Okay, so then every year or every six months, is that going to be on the manager's agenda to call them and remind them, hey, come clean the river?
If it's needed, yeah.
I mean, that's what, no, it is needed, obviously, somebody, because we're not going to always be here to say, hey, come clean the river.
Right.
Okay, that's number one. And like you said, they're obligated to clean the Passaic and maintain the Passaic, which is including the dredging that's going on. Why can't they dredge?
So their argument, and again, I'm not defending Passaic Valley, I learned all this.
And you're going to talk to me about the DEP?
No. I'm going to tell you what I learned when I was in the river with them, that they are obligated to deal with pollution and contaminants. They loosely, because they want to help out, according to them, because they want to help out clean out a shopping carriage or tire or something like that, they deem that stuff would actually lead to pollution, therefore, in their minds, they're willing to do it even though they're not obligated.
They're not doing any favors because it absolutely does lead to pollution. So they're absolutely, that is within their domain and scope of practice that they have to do that. So they're actually responsible for that, they're not doing anybody any favors when it comes to that.
Okay.
And the golf course, no one's mentioned the golf course, and what they've done to change the flow of the third river and the golf course impact on their poor drainage system that's going to affect everything on Fairway, because all that water with their broken pipes comes right to Fairway.
So I will say, when we were on site in the cemetery with the manager, we were pointing to that, we were looking at that, and that's going to be more of a DEP thing once they get here.
All right, now going back to the cemetery, the DEP issue, filling, like Gary mentioned, filling in the floodplains, okay, they're putting pavers down for a new roadway. That's on a floodplain. They're not, the DEP clearly states, there's nothing should be done to the floodplain, and yet the cemetery continues to do this. That entire area they built up, the dumping, the absorption, you're putting down those pavers, putting down roads that were not cleared through the DEP, none of that has, I'm sure if we pull, we go back, there's no permits for any of that.
Which is why I'm very excited that they're going to be coming. And I've taken the time to email our state delegation, they've both emailed me back, the DEP will be here. Mr. Manager, you were there in the cemetery, you have a contact now in the cemetery, do you want to add anything to what you saw, what you experienced when you were there?
Again, we walked the site and there was areas that we broke possibly cleaned on their side, which they admitted to. And again, the concrete pad that you're talking about, they have re-put the pad where they do have permission to dig additional graves. So the Hudson Passaic Essex County Civil Conservation did a site approval and did not have any concern with that. Now we're just waiting for a D.P., so we just have to walk and prepare. I'm just going to go on.
Okay, and now the floodplain. If you go back and you get the topography studies from maybe 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the topography studies are going to show you that the banks of the river are just about equal, okay? When you look at the current topography, they're very unequal. One side is about six feet off the river and the other side's about 20 feet off the river.
We saw.
That needs to be addressed.
Sure, we saw a lot.
That didn't grow by itself.
Okay. I see Ms. Gabby Bennett, Mene's here, she found an old map that actually showed an island there, and that island is now no longer an island, it's all been covered into one.
It's called Filden, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, we were there, we saw, we have the map, we're digging.
And who's responsible, who's going to, you know, how are we going to go forward with this?
Right, I would think that the agency that has the most authority here is going to be the DEP, which is why they've been difficult for us to reach, which is why we went to our state senator who has better reach than we have.
And what's the timeframe we have for the DEP?
Last email that myself and the manager received was just, I think, Thursday or Friday, saying that they're waiting on a date for them to come on the ground. And I'll be there with them when they're there.
Oh, the fire hydrant, right, and also on, you talked about, I didn't know about this GovPilot, but the fire hydrant on Fairway was damaged and it's crooked, sticking out. I have a water pipe in front of my house that was, I don't know what those things are in the street that have a cap on it, but that's pulled out and dented. I mean, these were all damages and, you know, so fire hydrant, I don't know if it works down the block.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, it's on Fairway?
It's on Fairway, it's the first one on the left-hand side, the first fire hydrant on the left-hand side.
Okay.
I don't know the number of the house, sorry.
That wasn't repaired since the last time we spoke?
No. It wasn't repaired as of this morning, when I walked by it.
But you can't turn it on because of.
No, I gave that to Bobby after the meeting, the last meeting, so I'll double check.
No, it's, has not been repaired. I walk my dogs by it every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Frantatoni? I'll get you, sir.
Phyllis Frampton, Tantoni Mount Prospect Avenue. The parking lot that's across the street by where that laundromat is, over where Belville Pizza is, that parking lot there, is there ever going to be a light put in there? I went out the other night, we went out for dinner, went there, it is pitch black.
I've been asking for three years.
Because that's going to be, somebody's going to get hurt there. And it's really bad. Does PSCNG put it up or do we put it up?
I'll let the manager answer.
Request from PSCNG.
The request for a.
A light in the parking lot?
Oh, that's, that would be PSCNG.
Did you call them?
I'd have to double check that, we had a meeting and we did cover a couple topics. I believe that was covered, but I will get back to you, I can definitely get back to you.
Okay. Now, the light that's for by ShopRite, is there any?
You're talking about the traffic light.
The traffic light, you know, the light for people crossing, has any further things been done on that? Are they getting to it? Are they going to put it up or does it have to wait a long time?
We haven't, no update since the last update, which was state's going to come in and do a $12 million venture. It was supposed to be 2022, we're now told because of COVID, it's now going to be delayed, and it will also be a subject of a potential condition when that applicant, was it 6:30? Wash? Comes before the planning board. So whether there'll be a stoplight, I don't know, it's a four-lane state highway, it might be a chief, but the red, the red, the Red Hawk, yeah, it's at the forefront of our conversations for sure.
I hope so, I hope it's done soon. And I'm very glad to see that the town is starting to go green. I've been doing that all my life with things, but does it mean we go green the way it looks when you come over the bridge and see that property on Rucker Street, that it looks like it's a forest? And also the property on Washington Avenue across from the Motorcycle Mall, is that how we're going to go green?
Nope.
Because that really is pathetic, that we live in a town like this and people, if they have their lawns too high, they get a warning and they get a summons, and they get away with anything they want to do. They let it grow into trees.
Can you, manager, maybe manually submit it rather than GovPilot?
Sure.
All right, and get after that guy with Rucker Street, because you're coming in from other towns and that hits you in the eye and it's not nice.
Horrible, yep. Anybody else, public comment? Mr. Frantatoni, I'll get you, sir.
Yes, here we go again with, I'll look into it, we'll call Public Service. You got a light out front that lights up a town hall and a pole. What I did, Public Service has a program, they will put lights where you request it and you pay the bill. I called them to get a light put on, one month, one month we had the light and we paid the bill for the lighting. So all we do is get answers, oh, we're going to look into it, oh, it's Public Service, it's not Public Service responsibility. They sell lights, they're willing to do it. You call them up, we want a light in the parking lot, within a month it'll be done. But all we do is get chatter. The other thing, you know, you're filling, you've got these breaks, water main breaks and street fill. Maybe you ought to send one guy from Public Works to work with Public Service one day. They just did a water main break in Washington Avenue. Our guys, they finish it and boom, a dump truck, they dump everything in there. It's $900. You can get a backfill tamper, the narrow ones like Public Service, you put 12 inches in, you tamp it, another 12 inches of tamper. Every job they do, within a week, it's all sunken, right? Some, I've been yelling for this for 30 years, they don't know how to fill potholes. You've just got some new trucks, I've seen you bought some new trucks. Can we teach our employees to place things in the trucks instead of throwing heavy stuff in there and destroying our trucks and cleaning them once in a while? Maybe that'll last a little longer. And now let me get back to what these other folks have been talking about. Fairway Avenue, and like I said, I know Gary, he's been living there for 30 some odd years. Every time the cemetery fills, he's called me up. Gary and I have personally witnessed the dumping there, construction debris, vegetative debris, everything, asphalt going over there. And the DEP, the DEP, nothing. We met, I think it was 2022 years ago, Ray Smolin from the DEP. I told you this before, maybe it don't sink in, I'll have to tell you again. He spent an hour and a half, two hours with us, Gary, I, and a reporter from the Belville Post, and he's writing down all the violations. They can't dump here, they should never dump here. The golf course, they never should have built that dam, they built the dam to divert to their golf course, but it goes to Gary's backyard. I don't know if you looked at it and all that. We met with the DEP. I told you, again, I'll tell you again. At the end, when we were saying goodbye, I still have his business card, when we met with him, when he wanted to know who we were, Gary introduced, I own the house, me, I told him who I was, I was on the Passaic River Coalition at the time, and when he heard that Donald was a reporter for Belville Post, he went, if one word gets in print, I'll deny I was ever here. So that's the DEP for you. They know this problem. It's up to you guys, like Gary says, if he dumps anything, if I dump something, if I don't clean my curb, I get a summons, you know? You can't push this off, I'm waiting for the DEP. You guys have to take action. You got to pass a resolution, I believe you, Mr. Rovell, have a resolution, why don't you introduce it tonight? Resolution approved by this council demanding the DEP violate Glendale Cemetery for illegal dumping, right? All we do is get, oh, yeah, I contacted, Mayor, I contacted DEP, I've called them three times. You've got to demand that Glendale Cemetery is violated for the construction debris and all the dumping on there, right opposite his house, which I know very well, we've been good friends a long time, the river was much wider. Go look at it now. That side, not only, and they were both the same level, both floodways were the same height and all that. Now the cemetery keeps dumping, it just grows higher and higher and higher. I'll come with my pitchfork and shovel, we'll go down a foot or two and you'll see all the construction debris. Mr. Rovell, Mr. Cazarelli, Mr. Mayor Melham, Mr. Notari, Mr. Burke, Mr. Graziano, when are you going to do something instead of talking?
I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Frantatoni.
Well, again, when are you going to actually do something?
Standing in the river a week ago.
But Councilman Burke, you were going to help us, you denied, you refused to do it this week.
Thank you, Vinnie.
All right? You all talk and no action. Glendale Cemetery is the problem.
Okay, thank you, Vinnie.
Take care of it.
Thank you. Councilman Rovell, you have something to say?
Yeah, through the chair, just so you know, Gary, we took a look at your resolution and you really can't go and indict people for things, especially since it's not our purview, it's not our control, it's not our laws, this is state stuff, this is well beyond the council's purview, and you know that, Vin, you served up here.
It's not our jurisdiction.
It's not, it's not our jurisdiction, you know that, Vin. Vin, you know it's not our jurisdiction, why are you saying this? You were on the council years back.
It's your responsibility.
It's not our jurisdiction, is it?
You asked the DEP for an independent investigation.
So, yeah, Vinnie, Vinnie, thank you, Vinnie. Vinnie, your time is up, Vin.
You just want an investigation.
You did mention Councilman Rovell, I want to give Councilman Rovell a chance to speak, he did, it's not really a back and forth conversation, though.
Let me speak the truth.
Okay, Vinnie, thank you.
It's not our jurisdiction. It's a request that the DEP investigate the illegal dumping of.
Thank you, Vinnie.
We had him review it.
Does anybody else have?
I think I should do it, admit it.
All right.
95 Bell Street. One of the things I wish you guys can do up there, especially you, Mr. Mayor, when another councilman is talking to you, can please be courteous, because I can't hear a word he's saying. I'd like to hear your answer and I'd like to hear his answer, so please. You don't know what it sounds like there, I don't know what he's saying, I don't know neither one of you are saying, you're yelling at one another, so please. I'm, that's not asking for much. It's been publicly announced that the Belville Historical Society made arrangements to have their valuable historic painting transferred out of the mayor's office to the Sunrally Museum at Rutgers University. Are you aware of this pending transfer and will you do everything you can to assist the transfer?
I'm aware of it.
Okay. The other thing is the planning board appointment, I brought this up, but I'm going to mention it again to put it on record, is being cited by 19.1, which is a 1975 ordinance. As I spoke before, that ordinance ceased to exist in 1990, was revised, and ordinances are revised, you do them all the time here, in 1999 and 2001 when you were in office, and that tells me that is not your appointment. And I don't know why or where you're getting your direction from, but I still say that is not your appointment. Okay, I'll put that on record. And I've always been making comments about you not charging for the website that you donated your time. And as I had a meeting with GRC once, they say, and it was admitted that there's no resolution, you just took over a website. Why can't you just do a simple resolution saying you're allowed to do it? My question is, are you taking any tax deduction, either personal or business tax, writing off Alpha Dog?
No, so the previous website cost about $18,000 a year.
I know what it costs, I know.
That's $36,000 in two years, that's $72,000 in my four-year term that I've saved the taxpayers by doing the website.
It's still a conflict, it's still a conflict. You're in control of that website. You could tell me you're not, but I don't know if I should believe you.
My council colleagues want to hire another company and pay them, I would be, I would welcome the opportunity to relieve my staff of the burden.
You're using up my time, okay? Now, there's another issue. What I noticed, what's so funny, Mr. Marquinhos? Anything funny that I'm speaking? I know you were laughing.
I'm going to have you address the chair, Mr. Drosch, thank you.
What I noticed is around town, there's a lot of times you see dumpster out of business, but I noticed that there's never permits in the window. There's one in particular, the dumpster was there, then it's gone, and now there's another dumpster back there, there's a vacant, the office was vacant for quite some time in the corner of Belville Avenue and Garden is the zigzag. Now, is somebody occupying that now because there's lice on, now there's a dumpster back, but there's never permits on there. And this goes on around town. So what are we, what are we doing with that building? Somebody's in there and there's no permit.
Contact Construction Code Department, absolutely.
What's that?
Contact the Construction Code Department.
I put it on record here, the manager could do that, that's.
What was the address?
That's why, that's why he's the manager.
What was the address? I'm sorry.
It's the corner of Garden Avenue and Belville Avenue, it's the old zigzag, there's only one building there, it's a three-story building, was occupied by attorneys at one point in time. Oh, yeah, just one last thing, resolution eight, is that another revale or is that just for certain properties, residential and commercial, number, resolution number eight?
Is that going to be the old, the great lawn act?
No, so we're, I'm sorry, we're looking for an appraiser?
Oh, it's Washington.
That's just for, for properties that the township needs to have appraised, either because they're going to sell them or sometimes.
Sometimes the township has to hire appraisers and we want to.
Just a normal ARQ, right?
That's right, that's all, that's all it is. There's not, it's not for a revale or anything. Oh, okay. It's not, no, it's for, like, sometimes the township has properties that they're going to sell that they own, somebody inquires, undersized, things like that. Only for selective properties or whatever. Correct. As needed. All right, that's good enough.
Thank you. Anybody else, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Debbie Ringwald and I live at 14 Heckle Street, I'm in Marie's area. I'm calling, I'm calling, I've come tonight to ask why the paving of every other street, I'm down closer to Bloomfield Avenue and it's really horrible down there, and they paved every other street over a year ago, I'm new, I just bought the house just over a year ago, and I did flood. So I'm just trying to find out why, and I also had, and I will applaud the guys from DPW because they did help me a lot with a sewer backup that I was having, and they did dig in the ground, this is in June, and I know we've had a lot of things go on and the flood and all, but that area in front of my house is sinking, and every time the street cleaner comes by, they take the garbage from, towards that Delevin Avenue, I don't know which one it is there, and they sweep it right into the hole in front of my house. So I just want to know why that street isn't paved, and I know the hole has to be filled, but the whole street is horrible.
Sure.
I want to say something through the chair. You know, I know that this is all going on because it's affecting me too, okay? And it starts from Bloomfield Avenue up to Hanast Street. They did not fix that whole street, but I did find out from Harretts, Mr. Harretts, that they were going to do that whole street.
Going to and?
Well, that's what I got from that.
So you got, I'm going to, but you see what it looks like from.
It's terrible, I'm right there, I can't even walk.
But yours is a lot better than mine is, to be honest with you. I'm closer to Bloomfield Avenue. I'm between Brook Street and Delevin and it's, it's really bad. So you had to get a new car because your car is gone and now you're going like this over every bump and you're not really happy about it. The other issue that, I mean, so I would like to know why it was every other street, and that's over, over a year ago, and this one, that end is really bad, Marie, you have to go that way to see it.
I see it every, every day, and I was told by the town engineer that it will be done.
Okay. What, he told you that it will be done, when was that, two months ago, three months ago?
No, no, about a month and a half ago.
Okay, so we'll wait till, so in the meantime, the hole in front of the house.
Will be fixed.
I can have that fixed tomorrow, what's your address?
It's 14 Heckle Street.
GovPilot.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like I said, the garbage gets swept, swept in every Thursday and I'm tired of cleaning up the crap from the street. My other issue there is that I was wondering, and I know like with the floods, we all emptied and I know, like, with the flood, we all emptied out our houses, and DPW came around twice, and they really picked up stuff. That house on Brook Street, again, on the corner, they filled up the whole block again.
I know.
So when you come down the street, you literally look like you are driving into the, the city dump. So is it, is it, are they picking up again, or are these, are the homeowners responsible to have that removed themselves at this point? After it's been, it's been...
I think the town is going to do that.
I don't know. It's, Mr. Manager?
The town?
Yeah, so it's a double-edged sword. We, at one point, we just don't have the manpower to just continue to do it. The storm is, is behind us now for probably eight weeks.
No, I'm...
And people just keep putting stuff out, people push stuff out. Our private contractor is not, doesn't have the capacity to do it. So, you know, it's, we're in, again, we're in a tough position, because if we don't do it, it's going to stay out there for weeks.
Well, yeah, and you know, worst weather's coming, and we've been seeing the rats coming out of sewer and...
I understand that. So, again, we, we hate to issue violations and citations.
People have been through...
Because people have just lost a lot, okay?
I get that.
So the last thing they need right now is another $150 ticket return.
I totally agree with that.
Again, they're not, you know, again, so we're in, we're in a tough position, because I don't really have the manpower to do it. And if we do it, you know, it's, it's, so we're just, we're trying to find the happenstance.
We're, we're looking at, then it stays there until you just keep driving down the street, and you're like...
No, I didn't, no. You said that, I didn't.
Okay, so it's just a matter of, of a when?
So it's a matter of, that we're going to have to start issuing violations. That's what it's a matter of.
That people have to have their own garbage removed at this point?
That's your responsibility, sure.
Because the town is not responsible at this point to do it.
Again, it's eight weeks after the storm.
I know, yes, yeah.
And it's, so unfortunately, those houses will be receiving violations. Now, again, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to...
I mean, it's, it's literally taken that whole corner.
I was there today.
You saw it? Okay.
I was there today.
All right. So that's all I wanted to know. So the 14, the, the hole will at least...
Yeah, weather permitting, we get some blacktop out there. We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Senator Black?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Caesarocca, 54 Rutgers Street. Two, two items. One to the point of the lady back here. That empty lot, Old School Number One, happens to sit directly across the street from my home. I've been staring at that empty lot already since it was knocked down. It's turned into a forest. It's become a breeding ground for rodents. You see stray cats coming out of there. It's just an unsightly thing for me to look out that window and look at that. I don't know what the plans are, if something stalled there, or what the intent of that, you know, it is for that lot. But at minimum, whoever owns that property should figure out a way to...
Clean it up.
You know, make that a little bit, a better sight for us to look at. The bigger issue at hand right now is the traffic situation on Cortland and Rutgers Street. It has become completely unsafe. You can all walk outside right now, and you're going to see New York City-level traffic jams out there. Just sitting out there, the biggest issue right now is that there used to be a no-turn on red on Cortland Street coming up. Some truck knocked it down. All vehicles now are making a right-hand turn freely, stopping all the other cars from being able to make a left-hand turn onto the bridge. It is chaos.
Okay.
Second problem with that is that there's horns blowing from 4 o'clock in the afternoon till now 8 o'clock in the evening.
Sure.
Can't sleep.
Got it.
5 o'clock in the morning. The other problem is, the, the construction or the site, the Riverside Medical Center went up there. When they dug up those streets, they left potholes. Trucks are going by there, 5, 6:00 in the morning. You're hearing the banging of those trucks, waking up the entire...
I grew up on Main Street, I get it.
So, just putting it out on record, see what we can do.
Thank you. So I can give you a quick, quick update on, first of all, the, the traffic issue, Chief. If you can, no-turn-on-red sign, that's apparently down. That's something that's easy. So you could always email myself, the manager, the chief. All emails are on the website. I respond to everybody. You don't have to wait for a council meeting or get frustrated enough to come to council meeting to, to, to address something like that. So that's a no-turn-on-red, Chief. You got that? That should alleviate that. The traffic, we were hoping to alleviate some of that traffic with the development. Unfortunately, that development is stalled.
Yeah.
That development's been going on, it predates me. And unfortunately, when the township engaged that, that, that development and that redevelopment area, not all the Ts were crossed, and the Is were dotted there. And there's some legal issues that are hanging out there, that were never addressed initially, and that's causing the delay now. But we are optimistic that once that gets sorted out, we have plans to maybe even redirect the traffic, so it doesn't have to come up. You'd be able to turn over the bridge right from Main Street.
Right.
And that would definitely alleviate some of the traffic where you live, because we won't be rerouting everybody up. Unfortunately, I know it's frustrating. One, I want a ratable on that property. That property's paying us nothing. It's not helping me, it's not helping you, your taxes. So I want a ratable there. I want it cleaned up. I'm the one that yells and screams about, it's a gateway project into Bellevue. That lot that Mrs. Frantantoni was talking about on Main Street and Rutgers, absolutely, I keep yelling about it. We, we, we have to keep yelling about it collectively. So the manager, I know, took some good notes today. We're hoping that now that that redevelopment issue is known, and it'll get fixed, whatever the problem is, we, we, we tend to think that that project might move forward. And when it does, it'll have a trickle-down effect to alleviate some of the traffic in that area.
Just on the traffic situation, is it possible, just from, period, maybe from 4 o'clock till a certain time, that there can be a patrolman there or something?
So what, what, what I do all the time when I get traffic requests, is we send that over to the chief. His team does a traffic study, and then they advise us. If it takes council action, if it doesn't take council action, the chief can certainly, it's well within his purview to do that.
Just, I, I can't even, the reason why I, I ran up here today, just, I couldn't even get in my driver's...
I appreciate you coming, though. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else in public commenting? Madam Clerk, I know we have one to read.
Yes, we do, ma'am.
You've got five minutes. You've got five minutes.
I understand. I have a comment from Mr. Alex Glassborough, who is a resident of Academy Street. He states, "In an attempt to unfetter the mind of Councilman Ravel and Police Chief Mark Menikini from the chains of static thinking that bind these town officials to the unreasonable belief that the only option to solving the parking issues on Academy Street is the construction of a parking deck under a massive structure obviously fraught with danger. To free you, Mayor Melham, and this council from this same absurd notion, and set your sights on reasonable options such as the use of residential parking permits and/or stationing a police officer on Academy Street at peak days. To prevent such parking issues from occurring, I offer the following immutable facts for consideration. In Bellevue, in a Bellevue Times article entitled 'Extra Security for Orthodox Christmas Celebrance,' dated February 7, 2011, the township manager Victor Canning, with respect to the harsh security imposed on the Bellevue, New Jersey taxpayer for the protection of St. Mary's Coptic Orthodox Church from terrorists, said these are law enforcement matters on a federal level. I cannot commend, comment on this matter, because it could put people's lives in jeopardy. Residents have to understand that the world we live in today is filled with people that do really horrible unthinkable things. I, I apologize to them, but this is the world we live in. In March of 2012, I then explained to the Bellevue, New Jersey zoning board how on January 6, 2011, the Essex County Sheriff's Department closed off the entire length of Academy Street from Hornblower to Washington in the wake of terrorism at St. Mary's, St. Mercurius Coptic Church, and of the abusive matter in which my innocent family was subjected by these gun-touting law enforcement officials. It was at the September 6, 2012 zoning board meeting that zoning board chairman Del Gerschel held himself up as a security expert, publicly declaring, "If anybody knows about securities, security, it was me." At the January 5, 2012 zoning board meeting, where questions were raised about the reason for Captain Meshi looking at the thickness from the wall on those proposed, on this proposed structure with an underground parking deck, when Captain Meshi responded, "If somebody tries to take a shot from the outside," Mr. Del Gerschel interjected to say, "What you can only do is take the most prudent measures to avoid anything from happening. But nothing is foolproof of any, of anywhere, and if anybody proved that, it is 9/11, okay?" Mayor Melham, enlightened of the appointed township manager Victor Canning's response to terrorism in Bellevue, that the world we live in today is filled with people that do really horrible unthinkable things, and zoning board chairman Del Gerschel's conclusion as a security expert, with respect to proposed building with an underground parking deck prone to shooting, that no amount of security is foolproof. Why then would anyone on this council, who was informed of the Bellevue Police Department's unreliability at the October 6, 2021 council meeting, allow themselves to sacrifice the lives of residents and children by condoning a structure in which terrorists will be shooting when there are far safer alternatives to resolving the parking issue on Academy Street, other than placing the citizenry in the line of gunfire? Councilmember Ravel and Police Chief Menikini folly in advocating for this parking deck under a building prone to shooting is only superseded by this council's indolence toward the safety of the residents of Academy Street by its willful refusal to resolve the immediate parking issues on Academy Street in a safe manner. Bear in mind, Mayor Melham, you and this council may not legally allow the liberties of one religious group to threaten the lives and freedoms of another, who under the United States Constitution also have a right to equal protection.
Motion to close, uh, public comment. Second.
Motion made in second.
Motion made in second to close public comment. The clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Resolutions?
I just want to pull six.
We are pulling resolution six. Anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to move the consent agenda. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Resolution number six. Resolution number six?
Uh, make a motion. Second.
We have a motion made in second. Is the discussion?
I just, yeah, I just, I just want everybody to understand what this is about. Bernardino Calasordo, lives on William Street. He's, he's 101 years old. We weren't able to celebrate his birthday, his 100th birthday because of COVID and stuff. But he is, I, I don't know if he's the oldest, but definitely one of the oldest WWII veterans in this, in this town. And he fought in both North Africa and Italy. So, you know, being this is Veterans' Day weekend, or week, we wanted to celebrate him and kind of commend him for his service and thank him for his service.
Mm-hmm. Good thing. Thank you. Okay. Let's, we have a motion made already in that, in second. So clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. New business? Hearing none, seeing none. Entertain a motion adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.